Good morning and welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners Meeting of October 11, 2022. All rise for the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Josh, we have the agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
Move the agenda.
Second.
McKevan, second by...
Me.
Was it you, Vance? All right. Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion and second to recess the board meeting and to hold an Economic Development Authority meeting. And so can I get a second, a motion and a second?
Move it, second.
It's been moved by Kip, second by Vance, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries, the motion, motion carries. Now I'll call the meeting of the Economic Development Authority to order. And the first item on the agenda to review is, Josh, are there any other changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes on that agenda either.
Okay.
Move to approve the Economic Development Agenda.
All those, uh, second, should say, you're second, and you're the second.
Second.
Second by Gillian, okay. And all in favor, oppose, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries, the motion carries. Uh, okay, at this time, we'll review the July 12, 2022 minutes. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the July 12, 22 Economic Development Authority Minutes?
Still moved.
By Kevin.
Second.
Second by Kip. Okay, discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, now at this time, we will have a public hearing on the 2023 Proposed PHA Annual Plan. And this hearing provides an opportunity for citizens to submit comments and recommendations on the proposed plan in a public setting. So, um, and so Nancy is here to give a brief update on the plan and address questions as needed. So Nancy, you got the floor.
Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, we bring before you the PHA's annual plan that will be for 2023. It's a comprehensive guide for the housing authorities' agency policies, programs, operations, and strategies for meeting our local need and goals under our federal programs. And this plan actually covers two major federal programs, the Housing Choice Voucher Rental Assistance Program, and then also the Public Housing Program. And these programs are funded using federal dollars, so they're not using our local dollars. They are federally funded. And here in Blue Earth County, we actually serve close to 921 families. And that is a combination of the vouchers and the public housing units. So here with Blue Earth County, Blue Earth County has 75 vouchers and 84 public housing units. Combine that with the units that the City of Mankato has, and City of Mankato has 583 vouchers and 179 public housing units. So that gets us the 921. And we do maintain a waiting list for both programs. For the voucher program, we have 891 households on the list. And then for public housing, we actually have 1,562. And I know with public housing, some of those families could also be on the Housing Choice Voucher Waiting List. You can get both options, so you'll see some of that. But a major part of the waiting list for public housing has to do with our one-bedroom units. A lot of people are looking at Ornes Plaza, and it's a desirable place to live. So there's a lot of households on that list. Even with the high number on our waiting list, it's about a three-year wait for assistance in public housing. And Section 8 has about a nine-to-12 month, which is great because there were times where it was up to five years. So we've been able to bring that down and be able to serve a lot more families. The other thing with public housing is that it is open to anyone, no matter where they live. So we don't have a residency requirement, although we give preference to those who have residency. So we are serving those that are in more need in our community. But there's a lot of people that may be applying that really had no intention of actually moving here. So that's why those numbers seem a little bit high. But the plan that we put together then, yeah, really follows looking at our strategic initiatives for the state's consolidated plan, so the county is covered under the state's consolidated plan. So we make sure we align with that. And we also work to tie with other service providers in our community to address our community need. So the plan kind of talks about that as well. And then we do also assess a number of tools that are provided through the federal programs. And that has to do with setting our payment standards, which are the rent guidelines that we follow, and determining eligibility for units in our community. And we'll talk more about that later today, too, because we do have our payment standards coming up for your review. We also review annually the utility allowances, and that comes to you for approval and goes into effect in March of every year. We also administer special programs. So under our voucher program, we also get additional vouchers that we can project-based into buildings like the tax credit projects, so like Rose of Place and Common Bond. With the double heights and double crossing, the new units coming in, St. Clair Flats and Lewis Lofts, they're able to keep some of their units affordable by using some of our project-based vouchers. We also have emergency vouchers, especially here during the pandemic. We did receive vouchers on, or emergency vouchers that can be used to support people who are homeless in our community, transition into permanent supportive housing. And then we have the foster youth vouchers, and those are helping youth coming out of the foster care system. As they age out, we can issue these vouchers and provide them support services through Lutheran Social Services. We also have vouchers for veterans. And then we have programs for self-sufficiency and homeownership. So we do work with all the families that we have on our program and offer them that opportunity to work towards self-sufficiency and hopefully even transition into homeownership. And so that's where we can, instead of providing a rent subsidy, we can provide a housing mortgage payment subsidy. And definitely, we layer the different funding in our community with this voucher program to make that affordable for some families. So I know even with Habitat, we can work with a Habitat house and use our subsidies to help make that house even affordable for some of the lower-income families. In addition to those special programs, we also have preferences that we use on our waiting list to help determine who we can serve and try to serve those in more need, yet still serving everyone across the whole spectrum of the waiting list. And some of the preferences we have are residency preference. We have a coordinated entry preference, which is like our homeless response system is our coordinated entry. So we have a preference taking names off of that regional homeless response system. And we have a move-on preference, so as people come out of the homeless response system in our supportive housing, they can transition to a voucher. We also have the veterans and domestic violence, our additional preferences, that we prioritize those families to try to get them services right away. And then we also use the capital fund program for public housing under this plan. And HUD provides a formula for determining the kind of capital funds we can get for public housing. So that goes through this process as well. And this year, we did, we do take the time to review our administrative plan and our occupancy plans and making changes. And so you'll see in the, in the packet here, we do talk about the different changes we've made to the administrative and occupancy plans. A lot of them were minor changes as far as language to allow us to do remote work with families and make it more inclusive in the terminologies that we're using, using they, them, and they rather than he or she. And then we looked at different languages for the utility allowances. We use a system with HUD called an IVT, which is an income validation tool, and then an EIV, which is an enterprise verification tool. Both of those are, our federal government does use the social security numbers of all of our participants, and they do verify with the IRS and social security the information that we've collected to make sure it's accurate. And so we do pull that at the time that they come onto the program, and then every year after that, just to make sure that the information being collected is accurate and matches other sources. It made some changes to update with the policies of HUD. A lot of times when families get to a zero housing assistance payment, they're able to pay the whole rent on their own. They have six months where if their income doesn't change, then they will transition off of our program. This allows them the opportunity to, if they feel they have a need to move to another unit, they still can do that as long as the new unit, there still is not a zero half in that new unit. Otherwise, they'd be responsible for the full amount of rent. Gives additional information on what happens when landlords foreclose on properties. It gives more information for owners as far as the vow of the domestic violence, the Violence Against Women Act, that we share with landlords, more information on their requirements to stay within the guidelines for that. And that really does give tenants that opportunity, if they're in a violent situation, that they can leave and not be penalized for breaking a lease. Gives a little bit more information on the elevated blood levels and reporting to HUD. We do hear of children with elevated blood levels, and that's where we usually hear from public health, if there is a child with elevated blood levels that is participating on our program. And then we did add a whole chapter on special purpose vouchers, and that has to do with the ones we just talked about earlier, the project-based, the emergency vouchers, mainstream vouchers for disabled, foster youth, and veterans. And then as far as the capital improvement program, the plan really is designed to, it looks at probably about two units a year that we rehab, and so it identifies the cost for doing that. And then we have saved a number of years of capital funds to support the RAD conversion. And so we're in that process now. We've completed a needs assessment, and we're going to be making a number of improvements to the units. Not that they're in bad shape, but that end-of-life types of things that we haven't traditionally done a repair on just because they are still in good shape. But HUD does require through the transition that we replace all the end-of-life types of things. So that has to do with siding and windows, as well as cabinets and appliances and those type of things. So we'll be going through, making some major updates with that through this RAD conversion. And it's been a slow process going through the RAD conversion, and that has been because of COVID and the inability to get to the units and do those inspections. And then actually, even working with HUD on the process, so it's kind of at a standstill for a while, but we are now getting our financial plans set with HUD. And we're hoping within the next six months to nine months that we will have that transition. And even when we do transition, it's still a year to 18 months that we work with HUD and make a lot of those improvements that we were talking about using the capital monies for. So we're still in that process. We still have been notifying tenants where we are through that process. And that will convert our public housing to more of a project-based rental assistance that will tie with the Housing Choice Voucher. So they will kind of merge those programs together. It will give us more opportunities to maintain our replacement reserves, so we don't have to spend all our money within the two-year timeframe that HUD provides us. We can save the money and do major improvements on our buildings, and it doesn't get taken back by HUD, so. And then the last thing really is that we would ask you to receive and file this agency plan and approve the resolution for us to submit it to HUD. We did do some, we did receive some comments or had some meetings with tenants. I'm not sure if you had copies of our tenant advisory meetings, because our last one was on October 3, and I think that was before, after our packet was delivered. We did meet with approximately 25 people at one meeting and 12 at another. And then we had about 12 people that called in and kind of gave us a little bit of feedback. We didn't get a lot of feedback from them, and I know even public housing at Ornes Plaza, a lot of them were seniors, and really concerned about having that mix of seniors and disabled in the same building. They like to have the seniors just in the building, so we had some of those type of comments. We're at the same time, we're doing this plan, we're also doing community engagement on the Affordable Housing Plan. And so we've had a lot of feedback that way, too. We did actually have a listening session with people with lived experience of homelessness, and they gave us a lot of feedback on the homeless response system. So a lot of our community input, you'll find that we'll be talking to you more about that through the Affordable Housing Plan that will be coming up at the end of the month here with you and doing some engagement with you at that time. But we'll give you some more updates on what we've been hearing from the community at that point. Do you have any questions or comments on our plan?
Anybody have any questions?
At this point, it's a lot of stuff.
Okay.
There's a lot of stuff. Is there anything on, like, the parking areas for the housing units? Like upgrading the parking areas or whatever, right? I mean, my concern is, as we go on years from now, is that we're going to have more hybrid EV vehicles. And, and of course, anybody owning one of those, coming into a public housing unit, won't have a place to charge them. Is there any talk, or is there anything about, you know, putting up, like, you know, 5% of the parking for EV charging units?
That's definitely a good recommendation. We do have our replacement reserves that are set aside to make those types of improvements, and we plan that out for a 30-year time period. So definitely, we'll make sure that that's part of our plan to address those changes.
And they're bringing down the cost of them now that they're about the same price as any other vehicle. And, you know, somebody said you can buy a five-year-old hybrid now at a pretty reasonable price, you know, used car. And a hybrid, you can usually drive it on, on the battery for 50 to 70 miles before gas kicks in, which is, most people, that's as much driving they're going to do during the day anyway. So it'd be great to have a place you could charge it up. I mean, if we have something in our, set in our rules saying, you know, this is what we need for our housing units, I think it would be a huge plus.
Sure, definitely, definitely not so big. So we can definitely make sure we add into that planning process.
Thank you.
One of the topics here talks about barriers to the policy. And it looks like they brought up the upfront cost of security deposit in first month's rent. Was anything added then to the policy to address that concern? Or is that possibly what we can do?
And those are things that we do work with families on on a regular basis. The programs themselves don't actually address that except for public housing. And actually, our public housing, security deposit on a sliding scale based on the size of the units. And so we have a very minimal, I think the highest is about a $300. Otherwise, public housing is much less than the regular community. But there's a lot of service providers that we've been able to connect people to. So Argumis, so is one of our key ones that we go to. the So Valley Action Council has helped with a number of them. Some people go to their local churches. But those two agencies are our main focus as far as getting help with those security deposits right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess really, at this point, I thank you, Nancy. I think we're supposed to go open, open the hearing for public comment. And so this hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record. And please limit your comments for three minutes. Wants to make a comment here, or if we have anybody else online. Is there any other comments or anybody wishing to make comments regarding this Public Housing Agency Annual Plan? Again, if there's anybody here who wishes to make a comment on the Public Housing Agency Plan, Annual Plan of 2023, come forward. Okay, if there are no further questions, then I'll bring the item back to before the board for other questions and consideration of the Agency Annual Plan listed here on page nine of our packet, so.
I would move approval of the...
It's been moved by Kip. Second by Vance. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Good job, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. Do we have one other? Final item for consideration is the payment schedule? Is there any, Nancy, is there any additional information to share regarding that payment schedule?
Yes, so every year, we do get from HUD the fair market rents that are established at 40% of the area market rent. So they have a formula that they do that determines that. And I know at the federal level, they really did focus on them this year and tried to raise them as high as they could. Some years, we do get decreases, but I think HUD across the board wanted to make sure every community after the pandemic did have raises in their payment standard. So we did see a significant raise. We saw them last year, and we saw them this year, too, approximately some of our standards went up like $100. But then, once we get those standards from HUD, this is our opportunity to look at our local market and determine what we need to set our standards at. We can set these payment standards at 90 to 110% of the FMR, the market rents. And so that's what we look at. And the first thing we do really is look at our participants and current participants that are, even though they're being subsidized, we want to make sure that all of them are paying 30% of their income. And as they are, when they get into the units, they can pay up to 40%. So, and then as they're in units, as their rent increases, then the payment portion can go up. And so every year, we're looking at that to see how we can adjust our standards to keep that rent affordable for them. And so this year, we did make some adjustments. And on the standards, you'll see that we ranged anywhere from 100% of FMR to 7% of FMR. And we'll see this year that we actually had some that were at 2%, 3%, and 4%. And our goal was always to even kind of see if we can manage even the 5% to 7%, 5% to 7%, 105% to 107%, just because in future years, even if HUD drops the standards, we still have some play with that percentage so that we can, we don't have to lower anybody's rent in the process. So we like to stay within that range. Although this year, we didn't need to raise all of them within 5% to 7%. So we did see some staying pretty standard. Though, efficiency units, you'll see, they didn't, we just left them at 100%. We really don't have any efficiency units that we've been leasing in our community, so we haven't, didn't have any comparisons for that. But wanted to keep them going should we find a, on efficiency. But for the most part, we do not have any of those efficiencies. And even this year, the last couple of years, we have not seen... even this year, the last couple of years, we have not seen increases in the five to six-bedroom units. And there's not a lot of those in our community. But we did raise them this year as we were seeing differences. And especially with the economy and looking at, you're hearing a lot about rents going up and with the economy, after the conditions we went through, that's a natural because we're going to see that. So in addition to just looking at our clients and the participants that we serve, we wanted to look at the general community. And so we did look at like the last three months of rents and what they were going for and use that in our calculation, too. And we still stayed within these affordable levels between 100% and 105%, 7%, which is a good sign to see. I know that there's a number of properties within our jurisdiction that receive different types of state and federal funding that are required to stay affordable. And so their rents are always between 3% and 5%. So a lot of those tax credit projects, that's where we see a lot of families going. Those are some of our newer units in our communities. So we have a lot of families in those using our vouchers. And so their rents are pretty standard, rent-controlled at that 3% to 5%. But we know we've seen a few properties where landlords have been increasing the rent because they haven't raised their rents. And some of the property owners, maybe five to 10 years, they haven't raised rents. But after coming out of the economy, with the economic conditions, the pandemic and moratorium, and then seeing cost of living increases with utility expenses and even maintaining them, lawn care and snow overrule and different service contracts, they had to raise those rents. And we understand that. And there's a hardship on the families that dealt with that. They saw like $300 increases. We tried to work with a lot of those that we heard that came to us and try to help them with vouchers to keep that rent affordable. Because we know if they have to move, they're going to move to another unit that has the same rent market. So those landlords brought their rents up to a market and every other unit in the area is going to be the same. So we tried to be there to support some of those families as they saw that. But we've been talking to landlords and they are talking about a 10% increase for some of their new lease-ups just because of that cost. So we haven't seen it happen yet, but some of them, they're talking about it now. So between now and the end of the year, we should see some of that happening, too. These standards that we are adjusting will really help accommodate that for those low-income families. And our intent is to really get the word about our programs. I know that wait time that we said was like a nine to 12. We have the capacity to take other families onto our waiting list to try to serve them. So as they start to see those increases, we hope that they will come in and apply and we can help them to do that. Also, looking at different ways that we can help to subsidize some of that. Maybe instead of having them raise rents, we could help them with rehab costs or different things. So we're open now, especially with our housing plan discussion, looking at ways that we can kind of help control the increase of those utilities without setting a rent control to properties. We're even bringing that to you guys for that option. But looking at other ways that we can help landlords so that they won't have to raise the rent. So keep that in mind. Those are things that we're talking about and looking at. And as we do these community engagements, those are questions that we want to hear more from people and what they'd expect to see. But in addition to all of that that we did, I mean, we definitely are looking at unit availability. I know the vacancy for affordable units is like 1%. Some of the market rate, you're seeing that 3% to 5%, but the affordability are under 1%. Those one-bedroom units are really hard to find. And that's where we're seeing more homeless in those one-bedrooms because there's just not enough housing for them. So those are things we're looking at. And as we see new buildings being constructed, we're definitely looking to do pieces of more one-bedroom units. And the last thing that we do work with is how long it takes a family to lease up in our community. And we give them a voucher. It's good for 60 days to find housing. We hope within that 60 days, with our support, that they can find housing. But we're seeing it is taking longer, especially during the pandemic. It did take a lot longer because some landlords weren't renting their units. So we're actually seeing probably close to 120 days. So we've kind of expanded that and are giving people more opportunities. And the other big thing we're trying to do is really engage landlords and try to partner with landlords and show the benefit of participating with us and another person in that support system to help those families be successful. So you may hear more about us doing landlord engagement just for that purpose. But then these standards will go into effect for December 1st. And again, like I indicated, we do have listed there the increases by bedroom size. And so we're bringing it today, asking you to approve the resolution adopting these payment standards.
Ellen will go first.
Vance moves to approve the plan. Is there a second?
Who's second?
Second by Julianne. Okay. Guess, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Thank you, Nancy. Anything else you want to add?
Thank you. Very much.
Thank you very much Nancy. Very informative. All right. I was just going to ask for Kevin and Sue Jern and Kevin seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. We're back to our board meeting and we have a medical examiner contract and it must be with Paul Verda. So, morning Paul.
Morning Captain.
Morning.
Yeah, Captain.
I appreciate the opportunity to meet with everyone this morning and provide a real quick overview on the medical examiner contract agreement. Basically, it's up for renewal. The previous version of this was signed November 13th of 2018. And again, it's just, that was the term of the contract and we're looking at a renewal essentially. Statute requires that each county has a medical examiner and this is, this is our way of fulfilling that obligation. If you have a copy of the contract, I direct you to the only changes that I was able to determine exist. One on page three and one on page four, both of those dealing with the liability insurance. One for comprehensive general liability, that minimum combined single limit increased from $600,000 to $2 million per occurrence. And the aggregate went from $1 million to $4 million. That was on page three. Second change regarding the insurance was professional liability insurance on page four. Minimum limits increased from $1 million to $2 million per occurrence and $3 million to $4 million aggregate. I went through line by line. Of course, the only other change would be the period ending. And again, this goes through 1231 of 26 unless by the terms of the contract, we would choose to make some adjustments, changes or terminate. So my recommendation to the board would be to, upon review of the contract, consider authorizing and signing that to basically extend the existing agreement.
Vote to approve and vote by Kevin, approve.
Second.
Second by Vance. No more questions?
I don't have any questions. Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Yeah, it is. So, okay. Well, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Thank you.
Paul.
Thank you Paul. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay. We have then, we got our Craig and Ryan, a bunch of setting dates for a bunch of ditches here.
Morning gentlemen.
Morning gentlemen.
Good morning. We've got three items. I'll start with County Ditch 57, quick memo. Blue Earth County Ditch 57 is a public drainage system which is primarily located in Beaufort and Mapleton Townships. Earlier this year, Repair Report 22-007 was approved by the Drainage Authority involving the installation of a new bench area for doing future maintenance for cleaning the open ditch system. As a result of the repair work, additional perennial vegetation buffer area is needed, therefore additional damage payments are required. So under 103E Minnesota Drainage Code, viewers must be appointed anytime additional damages are to be paid by public drainage system. The primary area for construction is located in Section 27 of Beaufort Township. At today's meeting of the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, I'm requesting that the Drainage Authority appoint Dan Ruby as lead viewer and Ron Ringquist as an alternate and also Charles J. Brandl to provide the Drainage Authority with the viewer's report.
Okay. Any questions?
I would move approval.
Looking for approval. Second by Kevin. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
All right. Next up is County Ditch 63, setting the final hearing date. A petition pursuant to Minnesota Statute 103E.227 for partial abandonment and reroute proportions of County Ditch 63 was received by Blue Earth County Property and Environmental Resources Staff on February 18th of 2022. The petitioners are requesting the partial abandonment and reroute proportions of the main line in Olet Tile, which is located in Section 21 of De Coria Township. We are asking the Drainage Authority today to set a hearing for November 22nd, 2022 to host this, excuse me, proposed petition hearing for County Ditch 63.
I would move approval.
Second by Kip and second by Vance. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right. Ryan, you have Craig now?
Yeah. This is regarding a petition for improvement of County Ditch 79. The Blue Earth County Ditch 79 watershed is approximately 480 acres in size and located in Judson Township. A petition for improvement was received on September 19th, 2022. Drainage Authority Attorney KLR Van Buren of Rinkin Nunan reviewed the petition and found it to be adequate. At today's meeting of the Blue Earth, of the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are requesting an order to appoint Charles J. Brandl of ISG to prepare a preliminary survey report in accordance with Minnesota Statute 103E.
I would make that motion. Kevin makes a motion for
Second.
And Vance, second. Any discussion? Are you in it? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
We got the last one, County Ditch 92. For setting the final hearing, a petition pursuant to Minnesota Statute 103E.805, which is a petition for removal of property from a public drainage system, was received by Blue Earth County Property and Environmental Resources on December 8th of 2021. The Drainage Authority at the time appointed Dan Ruby and Ron Ringquist as the viewers in charge of creating and submitting a formal viewer's report to reflect the submitted petition. Engineer Charles J. Brandl with ISG was also appointed to aid in the viewing council, should his services be needed for that viewer's report. Both appointments were made by the Drainage Authority on January 25th of 2022. The viewer's report was submitted to Blue Earth County Property and Environmental Resources Staff on September 8th of 2022. And today I'm requesting the Drainage Authority set the final hearing for County Ditch 92, proposed petition for November 22nd, 2022. That is it.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the
We'll do it.
Final hearing by Vance has been moved. There's a second?
Second.
Second. All right. Kevin. Okay. Discussion. All those in favor of the petition in, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good afternoon. Good day.
All right. I guess at this time, we have a little time. Public Works, it's Ryan. Good morning Ryan.
First and foremost, we'll be making a presentation for the Mankato Area Planning Organization, Cody Christiansen, Cody Owen. Welcome. Cody, I'm very welcome to sit up here.
Good to have you here.
Morning Cody.
Morning.
Morning Cody.
Morning.
Cody will be presenting on a Mankato Area Planning Organization study that happened in South Bend Township, looking at mobility for bikes and pets, primarily associated with our corridors on our county state of Highway 33 and 69. Go ahead Cody.
Hey. So yeah, so here to present on our Safe House to Multimodal Study in South Bend Township, as Ryan mentioned, looking at County Road 33 and 69 through the township, looking to make safer, more accessible facilities for people walking and biking through the community. So just going to go over kind of what we've been doing over the last couple of months and then what it's kind of led to. So, you know, looking to identify those improvements that could be made on the county roads, you know, looking to develop that implementation plan on how these facilities could be included, either as future standalone projects or part of a future capital improvement project along the county roads. You know, looking to maintain the operations that are out there for vehicles, but again, make those improvements for those using other modes of travel along the county system. So I just want to go over some of our engagement that we've been doing. We did a pop-up event on, I believe it was actually September 24th, it was a Saturday. We had a tent and booth located at the Clark's Gas Station right on County Road 69 and US 169, trying to capture folks there that were using the roadways and live in the area, going through the area to get their feedback on, you know, issues they saw or improvements that they wanted to see and some of the alternatives that we had put together. And then that same afternoon, we also moved over, there was a fundraising event for the South Bend Township Fire Department. So we were also set up there at the conclusion of that to get folks as they came back to the clubhouse to get, again, get some more feedback from the community on what we were trying to accomplish on these two county roads. So overall, we had 11 people sign in. We probably talked to another dozen more that didn't sign in, but we're able to gather some good feedback there from the community at large. And then also, we did a online survey that was delivered through Roosevelt Elementary School in Mankato, as the children from South Bend Township go to elementary school there. That was also sent out to folks that signed in at the pop-up events that we held. So we got, let's see, as of last week, we had 23 complete responses, 14 partial responses. You know, looking at largest factors that discouraged them from walking and biking in the township were the amount of odor-free car traffic, lack of connected trails and sidewalks, and personal safety concerns. And then when they ranked improvements that would most likely get them to increase them walking along the roads, those improvements included sidewalks, paved shoulders, streetlights, and marked crossings. Improvements that would likely increase them using a bicycle to travel along the county roads included paved shoulders, streetlights, and shared-use paths. Lighting being the highest ranked for people walking and paved shoulders being the highest ranked for those wanting to bike along the county roads. And then also presented at the South Bend Township Board on October 4th, that particular meeting didn't, wasn't quorum to hold an official meeting, but I was able to talk to the two of the four board members that were there to again, get some more feedback from those community leaders on the alternatives that were presented and get some feedback there. So just to kind of give an overview on what we were looking at for different concepts. So we had two different alternatives along County Road 33 from Birch Avenue on the south up to County Road 69. Both of them took advantage of the improvements the county had made kind of on the southern half of that where the paved, the shoulder was paved and then some drainage was included in that to extend kind of the roadway there for people walking and biking. So then on the north half, option one was to kind of continue that paved shoulder up to County Road 69. And then our concept to, if you go to the next page, then looked at adding a shared-use path on that east side of County Road 33 for that northern half. Then when we went to the public, we had four concepts along County Road 69. When I get to the evaluation matrix, you'll see how two of these concepts were combined into one as we get into our evaluation. So concept one here is looking at that extended paved shoulder on the north side of County Road 69, where there's, for the most part, adequate roadway width available to get that in without adding a lot of fill or extending the roadway structure to the north. Concept two then is looking at a shared-use path on that same side. So that's an eight-foot Concept two then is looking at a shared use path on that same side, so that's an eight-foot trail with a ditch in between that and the roadway. That one does require some fill that will go outside of the right-of-way, especially as you're coming down the hill towards 169. This concept three is the shared, or the extended shoulder on the south side of 69. So this is the concept that was combined with concept one. Basically, if we're going to do a paved shoulder, we would want to put that on both sides so that people that are walking and biking in the roadway can stay, have facilities on either side. And then concept four then is the shared use path on the south side. So again, since that's a shared use separated from the roadway, that would just be on the one side. So as we got into kind of our evaluation, this is the draft of that, there'll be a more finalized version coming out with our draft report later this week. But kind of looking at how all of those concepts then kind of meet our project goals of safely accommodating all users, driving, biking, walking, providing that efficient and reliable mobility, then also looking, making sure we're doing a financially responsible plan, making sure it's cost-effective for what we're trying to accomplish, and then just trying to make sure we fit in with any social environmental concerns that exist out there as well. So you can see kind of how those came out ranking kind of in this first draft form of the paved shoulder slash shared use path on 33, and then the paved shoulders on County Road 69, kind of coming to the top from our technical analysis. So we'll take that along with our public engagement to get to a recommended concept. So next steps, taking any feedback today from the county board, we also have presentations to the Mankato, North Mankato Area Planning Organization, their TAC, next week on Thursday, and then we also present to their policy board in early November. So we'll have that draft report here this month with that report getting finalized in November and wrapping up the study in November. So that's that. I'll take any questions that the board might have?
Does anybody have any questions? Is Cody here?
I don't have any questions. It's a good report.
Yeah, pretty thorough.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right. Okay, couple of action items today and a lot of information and discussion. So the first, second action item on our agenda following that report is consideration of final contract payment number five for state aid project 007-598-031, which is for the County Road 169 new bridge over the Little Cobb River. This was constructed by Minowa Construction Incorporated. Revised contract amount $776,795, with a final contract payment amount of $7,548.21. I would recommend final contract payment.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Kip, second by Vance. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
And action item number three is consideration of final contract payment number five for state aid project 007-640-005. This is for the County State Aid Highway 40, new bridge over the Willow Creek by M&amp;K Bridge Construction. Revised contract amount $516,000, $516,036.10. Final contract payment amount for this pay voucher, $5,135.85. I would recommend final contract payment.
Kevin?
Second.
Second by Vance, for the 40 bridge replacement, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
All right, thank you. Construction project information updates, County Road 151 Bridge Replacement is moving along nicely. The bridge structure is completed, final grading is underway, and it's set to reopen by mid to late October. That's a bridge that we do plan to include on our road tour along with County Road 169, which will be set for very early November. Cassat 1 from 9 to 90, the architectural finish of the soil mill walls is underway and progressing nicely. They're working on the last wall, so we anticipate they'll have about two weeks of work left on that wall. The pavement is scheduled for the order to happen over the remainder of the next few weeks, final grading, turf establishment. Establishment will follow that pavement. Mathlets has been working on placing riprap behind and around those retaining walls, so it'll start coming together really nicely. We are anticipating a mid-November completion date, actually I believe the calendar date that says November 18th. So it did take longer than anticipated, we ended up having to build more walls, which will result in a contract overrun, but as we started getting into it, you know, that topography is pretty hard to pin down with the slopes that are kind of constantly changing out there, so it's coming along nicely though.
Rome wasn't built in a day and neither was our wall.
No, County Road 151. The Rome corridor perhaps.
Thank you.
Cassat 11 from 20 to 68, paving is scheduled to be completed this week. Shouldering turf establishment will follow that final pavement layer, and we anticipate that will be completed by the end of October, so things are starting to look up. Cassat 12 from 26, east to 2, paving is completed, final grading and turf establishment on the south half is underway. As you know, the north half has already been open to traffic. We're actually hopeful to get that open next week.
Next week? That would be good, yeah.
Well, if there's anything good about the dry weather.
Yeah.
Construction for roads.
Roads construction.
That's all good.
16 from the La Sura River to 90, plans are at 90%. Staff is scheduling right-of-way meetings and working on the right-of-way plat parcel acquisitions. Intend to begin acquisitions and finalize the plans with state aid over the next few months, so moving that one toward 2023 construction. Cassat 13 from 169 to 1, staff are reviewing SRF's 90% plans. We're anticipating right-of-way meetings will begin over the next few weeks moving forward as well. And then other big design project we have underway is Cassat 26 on the Wickersham campus from 57 to Minnesota Highway 22. We're anticipating receiving 90% plans from Bolton Make later this month for review, so that's moving along nicely as well.
Do you have a lot of right-of-way to buy in that one?
Not a lot, it's primarily easements, we don't need much retitle. We do need some new right-of, permanent right-of-way along that agricultural field just west of Wickersham.
And there'll be a trail on one side of it?
Correct, on the south side of the road. Maintenance updates, our crews are working on placing gravel shoulders throughout the county, they're working on freshening pavement markings, especially like the railroad crossing ahead throughout the county, and they're also beginning erosion repairs at Wildwood Park this week. We don't anticipate that that's going to conflict with park use, but they will be in there during those normal working hours. We've completed mowing out the northern third of the county, again, we talked about the bigger tractors and mowers has helped out considerably because we don't have as much seasonal staff to dedicate to mowing. So now we're going around through the rest of the season finishing up top cuts and in slopes if we can get as much as we can get for the rest of the season. We also have several driveways and tile repairs to complete this month, and our maintenance folks are, right now really working on, I'm sorry, our parks folks are really focusing on winterizing the different park facilities. After that, they'll resume working on that Bray Beach bathhouse, get that ready to be reopened by next year. With respect to the county transportation plan update, we received two very good proposals, one from Bolton Make and one from SRF. After thorough review and consideration, we actually developed different grading criteria for those proposals and go through and evaluate, score them. Three of our staff go through that, including myself, and then we conglomerate our scores, discuss it after all of that review and consideration of professional services contractors awarded SRF based on overall project value, including project costs, but also the amount of hours that we receive out of that said cost. Additionally, they provided more of an edge on project management team and relevant experience with all the different maple studies and things that they've done, but we were very fortunate to have two really good proposals, and I don't think we could have gone wrong either way. We're scheduled to have a project kickoff meeting next Monday, so that's a lot of our discussion items with respect to construction and other things in the department. Before we jump into the dam, maybe I just see if there's any questions.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
It's pretty good, good report.
Well, I've got a lot of discussion with the dam, so I did provide the memorandum to the county board, and I've got some follow-up items that happened subsequently after I submitted this memorandum that I'll cover as well. So I may cherry pick some of the items and not read it word for word, so if you do have questions, please feel free to stop me or jump in at any time. So we'll start somewhat chronologically and try to keep the conversation tracked, so I'll jump around a little bit. But on September 19th, we met with Army Corps of Engineers Representative Craig Evan and Nathan Wallerstedt. This did include Commissioners Stuenberg and Pat on this call, and we talked about the Army Corps Ecosystem Restoration Program. So it was a good conversation, it helped provide, I think, additional insight to staff and to the commissioners on the outline of that program and what it really entails. So they provided an overview of partnering with the Corps. This was really the similar conversation to the process that I provided in the September 6 Rapid安Update Memorandum that was in the previous board packet, so I won't belabor that. They were previously evaluating the dam in 2007, then I think the county made the decision to move away from the removal tract at that time. Craig and Nathan stated that the Corps is not really in a position to help the county do maintenance, they're in a position that they could help the county with, you know, ecosystem restoration and dam removal. One of the things we talked about is, is there an opportunity for the county to utilize its FEMA funds to conduct the feasibility study on its own with Corps feedback and try to short-circuit the need to go get congressional funding? And if you remember, it would require that we would try to ask for congressional funding for fiscal year 2025, so to try to accelerate that, could we utilize our FEMA dollars and request that we do the study, we hire an expert? That gets pretty murky as we went through that conversation, and primarily because you can't mix federal dollars, generally speaking, so while we could use those federal dollars, we would be on the hook for 100% of the study costs instead of 50%. As you may recall, we do have 1.638 million for repair and about 1.04 million for mitigation. It sounds like really only the repair dollars would be able to be used for that mitigation dollars are really only supposed to be used for that mitigation project. We have a much tighter leash on those. So they recommended additional discussions with FEMA and Homeland Security Emergency Management to ensure use of those funds is acceptable, which I'll jump to in a little bit in item three. Additionally, we discussed if that were acceptable, could that additional county cost participation above the 50% be credited towards a future project? They referred us subsequently in a guidance document, outlined in item number F, which states in my memorandum that it goes through all these different iterations and verbarations of revisions to the Section 203 WRDA Act of 1986. It requires that the study be federally authorized in that guidance document. At the request of the non-federal interest, which would be the county, the secretary shall provide the non-federal interest technical assistance relating to any aspect of a feasibility study, requiring that we, the non-federal interest, would pay for all costs, all agency costs associated with that technical assistance. So I anticipate that would become very expensive to not only pay for the study, but to also pay for the technical assistance from the Army Corps. It also went on to further specify that any funds provided by the non-federal interest under Section 203 would not be eligible for credit reimbursement, so we wouldn't be able to get 50% of that back later. Completion of the environmental compliance required documents are inherently a federal agency action. It's not something that the county could submit, so we would still be highly dependent on the Corps or other agencies to complete those. So that gave me considerable concern about that process and the cost associated with it in addition to trying to do a report on our own. Explicitly states that the non-federal interest cannot complete the work, it can only provide information that can be used for completion of that work, so I think we lose obviously the expense of it, but the control of the timeline as well to an extent. We're still going to be reliant on Corps or others. It does lay out the process for us to obtain process approval through project coordination, review actions, feasibility studies submitted to the Corps. Ultimately, the non-federal interest being the county bears risk that the study may not meet the Corps standards or requirements and may not be accepted. So with that, I'm somewhat hesitant on that process, especially given the fact I'll jump to item number three in my memorandum, which was my subsequent conversation with Wayne Lamaro from Homeland Security Emergency Management, who administers the FEMA funds that were previously awarded to the county for 2019 flood damages. They can be used towards engineering or demolition with a FEMA-approved scope of work revision, because obviously the scope of work I provided in 2019 in the funding application was for repair of the downstream apron training walls and some of those other items. It did not include the gates because at the time Eagle Creek or Rapid安Hydro was responsible for gate repairs. If the Corps is funding a portion of the dam removal project, it highly complicates the use of FEMA funds, especially if we desire to combine them with Corps funds. That's a challenge because again, you're not supposed to mix federal dollars. Wayne needs to further review our funding application to familiarize himself with it. Those funds, as we've discussed previously, are set to expire in June of 2023, and we need to request a further time extension, and that will require to be submitted to FEMA to extend those funds another four years. He recommends we start that process six months in advance, so that's something I need to start this December. Ultimately, in our conversation, we inquired if we were to ask about using those funds, perhaps if, you know, we've got this moving target also with the FERC, and I'm going to go back to that next, could we somehow use these FEMA funds if we don't know what we're going to do with the dam now, but we have to fix the gates regardless? Could we use those FEMA funds to fix the gate? That would require a scope of work revision as well, which is something I would need to start tracking down and beginning that process this winter, probably November, December, January latest. And one of the things we do want to capitalize on is the fact that there are FEMA staff in Bloomington because of the disaster declaration farther to the north, who we could meet with and provide us guidance on this process. It may be a somewhat painful process, as most things with FEMA are, however, they're at least positioned geographically that we could receive some assistance on this. So in my conversation with Wayne, you know, he somewhat emphasized that additional direction from the board on where we want to go with the dam would be helpful for that direction in the conversation with FEMA and HSEM on how we utilize those funds, if we can put them to work for us to buy us time or to do perhaps necessary repairs that are going to be forced on us that we may not want to do right away, but perhaps we could use that fund source in lieu of local dollars, just to utilize those so we don't lose those federal He did inquire where the 35% match would come from if we were to go with the Corps program, and I had stated I anticipated that would be a combination of state and local dollars. So perhaps I want to kind of just maybe stop there and ask the board, perhaps I just need to start with this, that my recommendation based on my conversations would be, likely be to be against the county funding the Corps study and doing it on our own. It just seems like it's a very complex project. I didn't get a resounding yes from our consultants we work with, that yep, we know this process and we've done it a bunch. They may have others within their organization that have been through this process, but I don't know that it's highly common, and the Corps seemed far less than enthusiastic about somebody else doing the study. They said it could be done, but I just really want to recommend that, or not recommend, but at least advise the board, in my opinion, that I think there's some risk there. So with that, I would perhaps put number one out there, is the board interested in considering a study? And I don't know that I need an answer today, I just wanted to bring it up for conversation. Any thoughts or... Are there any thoughts or?
We would have to make the decision whether we want to fix the dam or tear it down.
Correct.
Before we make that decision, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's going to be the first process, is we need to basically make that decision. And what I'm hearing from you, we should make it soon.
Yeah, I'm trying not to pressure the board on this, but what we're getting from a lot of these agencies, and I'll maybe, maybe we can pump the brakes on that, because you're absolutely right. That decision needs to be made before we go down this path.
Right.
There are some other items that'll be contingent on where that decision leads us as well, as I'll lead into our conversation further. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there with a little bit of a pin in it, that if the board decides removal versus repair, if it's the removal tract, then that decision is kind of a subset of a decision, that we need to determine if we want to try to fund the study ourselves or request Corps funding through Congress, which would need to go into Congress by late winter, so that it could get into fiscal year 2025 appropriations requests.
Then they would start the study in 2025, or after it's appropriated, if we get the money.
Yeah. Are we sitting on any timeframe, maybe I can ask you this, Josh, to make this decision?
I would say there's not a tight timeframe. It's just with what Ryan's laying out to go down this process, so no, there's nothing a tight timeline.
I mean, I would propose that our next board meeting, we make that decision.
You're proposing that?
I mean, that's, I mean, to bring it up to the question. We've all had hours and hours of discussion on the Rapid安Dam. And I guess I would like to know what the rest of the board is thinking, and if we're going to go one way or the other way. We need to make that decision.
Yeah, so this here was, this information is very helpful, because if we're going to go down this path, funded it, how are you going to fund it, whatnot? So this is helpful. Is what's a little challenging is you have to make that decision now, because a lot of the information I think that we'd get out of this report would be helpful to us to make that correct decision. So I don't disagree, we need to make a decision, but 20, whether we get the funding in '25 or '26 or '27.
Yeah, I don't care when it's done, but we need to make the decision.
I disagree with that, but I think we, I think our timeframe is the funding, getting into the, for the '25.
Correct.
I'm more interested in how safe is the dam, so now we're leading back, but I don't want to get off this subject, but we need to go back and talk more about how safe is the dam. We don't want to shift gears yet, but.
Well, yeah, absolutely. And perhaps, I apologize if I jumped the gun or pushed that, but it was, it's something that's looming, and as it gets closer, it's going to continue to have ramifications. So maybe I'll jump back, and then we can come back to that, because I think there's some other items in my report that are going to have impacts on this conversation.
Well, and just to jump in there, I think that's the other question that we've sometimes heard from the board, is that, you know, this is a remove or repair. At times, there was some conversation from the board, is there something else you wanted to look at? So I think there's that. So if you say, is it a yes or no, or is there something else you wanted to look at? I don't know if the board had fully made that determination, if there's anything else that wanted to be studied or be done as maybe a hybrid approach. So there's that that's been out there as well as conversation.
Refresh my memory, anyone, but my understanding, we are at the point where we're not interested in doing hydro. I think we've kind of determined that by consensus, or, I mean, at one point, didn't we kind of just determine that we just don't want to be in the hydro business?
Well, we've talked about, that's something we need to decide.
Okay. I kind of thought we've made that decision.
I would say to a work session, there was probably maybe some consensus, but there wasn't an official vote on that of the direction. Exactly. You couldn't do that at a work session, but that was where the discussion was led.
We could make a vote on that.
Well, can I, can I jump in?
Right, go ahead, Ryan.
On that, you're leading right into where I'm going with this, so I think we're all on track here.
But before we leave the other, I guess I wanted some idea of where the board consensus, depending on those decisions, is, and then it would, you know, for a study, it's funding for a study, what is the board's attitude if we were to do that study of having Army Corps involved in that, we're going out on our own, as you had some concerns with? I mean, we're not approving that study today or anything else, but I guess I would have some concerns as well, doing a study kind of outside of the Army Corps of Engineer being involved. I would think if we are going to do it, they should be part of that. Because that's a decision point as well.
I agree with you, Kevin, and I would take Ryan's recommendation on that. Let's not try to do that on our own. We need to be with the Army Corps. It's a longer timeframe, but that, we just need to be.
Yeah, that would be the main thing. It would take longer with them involved, I'm sure, but it'd be the way to go.
Mr. Chair, and just responding to, you know, Commissioner Brunder, I think your question, so you're, if you're making this decision to go down this track of removal, but you're saying, well, we also want to hear what this report states of where we need to go, and that's, I think, where it gets to be difficult. So you go down this report, could you hear something different in that report that could cause the board to shift or pivot at that time?
Maybe I'll jump in there, into the discussion with the Corps. We kind of talked about that, that what if the study isn't telling us that this is going to be a surefire solution, or that it's a guaranteed approval if this report is submitted? Because ultimately, the objective is, if you're going to do a report of this magnitude, it's to justify the removal costs and get federal funding to assist you with the project. And they described it that there's several checks, and I believe Commissioner's correct if I'm wrong, my understanding is there's checks along the way where they're going to have an idea that this maybe isn't going to be a successful endeavor, and then there's going to be opportunities perhaps for us to pump the brakes before we go all the way through this process. That was my understanding.
And I would have been more interested that we've committed to removing it, and they get about, they get their report done and say, no, not worth the test, we're not going to give you the federal funding, but you've already committed to removing it. Now you've got to come up with the $80 million straightaway. So that's my concern, you know, because you're making it sound solid, and that, you know, we've decided to remove the dam, and now all of a sudden, it doesn't work out, we're on the hook for the whole work. So that'd be my, and I know it's pretty unlikely, but I don't want a $80 million bill to remove the dam without any federal funding or something. I mean, because this is too big a bite for us to take on.
Absolutely. Understood.
It's so final when you say you have to make a decision to remove it, and that's final, but I appreciate your extra comments about it, there is other places where we can pump the brakes, they would say.
To Commissioner Pap's comment, I think what, if we decide, it sounds like I've got consensus that we don't want to try to do this study on our own, because that takes away me chasing another avenue of can we use those FEMA dollars or some other fund source? So it helps me focus my energy on direction and outcome, instead of kind of chasing 10 different leads. It just kind of cuts some things off so that we can better focus.
I'm not interested in funding it.
Okay.
Right.
That's very helpful for me.
The study.
I appreciate that.
Yep. Definitely that.
So that was very helpful. With that, I'll go to item number four. In an October 3, 2022 email correspondence with Jason Doyle, Minnesota DNR Dam Safety Engineer, I inquired if the county.
We're not going to forget number two, though, right?
Nope, I'm going to go back to that. There's a method in my madness. I laid it out better. I put it in chronologically in my memorandum, but I should have put it in more conversations sequentially. I inquired if the county board decides to repair the dam and stand with no hydroelectric production, is there state funding available, and how likely would the dam be to receive the funds? And this was follow-up to previous board conversation in September in the direction it was given from the board. Jason responded, there's currently is no state funding available. He can't predict how the legislature would act for a large request that would make the dam, and he uses the term operational, but I think he, maybe connotation isn't quite where he was aiming, but would still leave a very aged dam with not a lot of purpose in place. So by operational, I think he means functionally safe, but not operating as in producing hydroelectricity. So he's not confident on how the legislature would look upon spending those resources on the dam that maybe isn't producing hydro and is still somewhat of a risk, a high hazard risk. Another factor, State Statute 103G.511 outlines factors in determination of grants for publicly-owned dam repairs. Those factors include dam age, construction type, use of the dam, associated consequences of the alterations, and the importance of the project. I can't say where I think we would rate on those. I honestly don't know, because I don't know what other projects we would be going up against. But if it's a functional dam that has more use and purpose other than aesthetics or holding back sediment, it may not fare well. Additionally, the county would be expected to provide a 50% match to those state funds. And the dam is currently not on the dam safety project priority list, but it will be for the next update to set list. So that was a follow-up to the inquiry that was made by the county board regarding DNR and dam safety. If there's any other questions on that item before I move on.
So if I'm hearing and understanding this correctly, I'm, my read on this is, they don't have a problem with us letting it sit there, but the fact that it's not going to be a hydro dam will really be challenging us, for us to get money to repair it.
In an indirect way, that was what I got out of it as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So now I'm going to jump back to number two, and we're going to go down a little bit different tract. On September 29th, the FERC provided an annual dam safety inspection follow-up letter. This letter includes several observations and requirements for the county to meet in the future. I'm going to provide a handout. The reason this was not included in the board packet is because this does include critical energy infrastructure information, which I passed the panel. So it was not able to be made public, hopefully posted. So I would ask that anybody that has a copy of this, please keep it confidential. The first page that's on there, you've seen before, this has been attached to several memorandums, this is a list of those outstanding and ongoing dam safety tasks. So this is somewhat of a summary of the items that are included in the DSSMR, Dam Safety Surveillance Monitoring Report. This is a copy of the draft report, however, these pages did not change to my understanding. So the reason I provided this, and I won't read through the DSSMR pages directly, because they're summarizing here, but I wanted to provide it with you to show that we've got a history of these items being recommended. So we're going to be looking at items 1.3.3 to 1.3.7 as they're referenced in the FERC's letter. Okay? So the FERC expects the county to assume the responsibility for all of the previously discussed and authorized tainer gate repairs. Those were the tainer gate repairs that were authorized for Eagle Creek, AKA Rapid安Hydro to make. We assumed that responsibility when we took over the licensure exemption for the dam. We knew that, that was in this spreadsheet we had reviewed previously. The county is to provide our plan and schedule by December 30, 2022, outlining potential decisional milestones with regard to the feasibility studies, as well as the county's response to address sections 1.3.3 through 1.3.7 of the November 19, 2021, fourth Part D report, which, again, I provided you those sections of the draft report, as well as the summary page. As a brief summary, those sections include considerable maintenance, repair, and monitoring efforts. 1.3.3 is for potential failure mode analysis report, which those items are listed on the one-time tasks in the bottom half of the table on the front of the handout. 1.3.4 includes additional tasks associated with the DSSMP, the dam safety surveillance monitoring plan, which is required, an update to that is required by December 31, 2023. And 1.3.5 includes field inspection items, which includes, I'm looking at this report, feeling and sealing cracks in the upstream base of the nonoverflow bulkheads, long-term maintenance repairs listed in the Part 12D report. And then 1.3.7, file updated supporting technical information documents. So there are several different documents that are going to be necessary to be completed and updated. I've asked BAR for a ballpark price to bring these documents up to date. As you may recall, I believe our emergency action plan ended up being about $15,000 to have them update. It's not to say all of these documents require somebody with the expertise that BAR has to update them. We could try, but there may be things, because it's out of our wheelhouse and our expertise, that we would miss. I would hate to expose the county to that risk and liability. So that's a summary. They want an action plan of when are we going to make decisions? So again, it's not just me trying to push for an understanding of when are we going to know what's going to happen? So the FERC is pushing us on that as well. Once the tainer gates are repaired and the downstream bolt launch is usable, another dive inspection should be conducted. The county is to provide the status of this or the completed dive inspection report on the next DSSMR, Dam Safety Surveillance Monitoring Report, due April 1, 2023. So federally, DC is pushing us from the FERC to get the tainer gates repaired and operational, because it's important for us to be able to close those gates so that we can do downstream dive reports, even when we can't really seal the gates very well. And it's a critical component of an operational dam that produces hydroelectricity under the FERC's vision. So that's probably a clear differentiator distinction to make, that that's tied to electrical production. The tainer gates are something that are going to continue to be pushed upon us. They were supposed to be done, and I believe it was in the top part of our, top part of our table, but repair those tainer gates, those bend members, and the drive mechanisms so that they're mobile. The county is to monitor the crack gauges monthly instead of biannually. We can do that with our onsite staff or with our county staff. We are set to, we are required to review the dam safety surveillance monitoring report, filed by Eagle Creek and respond by December 30, 2022, with its findings and statement of certification regarding continued dam operations. Somebody has to certify that the dam is safe to continue to operate. That's not something I'm qualified to do. So I've asked BAR to look into that. That's a very, when you start talking at the end of the year, that's coming up quickly. So I'm already trying to put BAR in motion on helping us with that.
So this line clear, Ryan? All this stuff you're talking about is if we're going to have it generating power?
That's where I'm.
Okay.
You're correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely. The county must submit an owner's dam safety program by December 30, 2022. So again, another document I'm going to have to have assistance from BAR to complete. That, again, by the end of the year is going to be starting to get tight. And the county must review the current Rapid安Dam public safety plan and update it as necessary to reflect county's ownership and operation by end of year, December 30, 2022. What a few documents that have to either be rewritten or updated. There will be substantial costs associated with that. I don't want to speculate. I did ask BAR for clarification on those costs, and I'm hoping to have those for you by next, next update. These requirements are going to be very time-consuming and likely incur significant costs to complete, again, with that external assistance. So further discussion is recommended regarding the county's desire to pursue hydroelectric production in consideration of surrendering and deference licensure exemption. And with that, I don't have it in my board packet, because the call just happened yesterday. So I'll provide you with a verbal update, and I can summarize this in my next memorandum if you like as well. But I was able to speak briefly with Scott Ariato from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, dam safety engineer. Scott is the engineer that did the onsite inspection of the Rapid安Dam with us about a month and a half ago. And I asked him several questions regarding the follow-up letter. If any commissioners are interested, I'd be happy to provide a copy of that as well, but I've summarized the contents of it in your memorandum. He, I inquired, if the county surrenders the FERC licensure, how would that change all of these requirements that are laid out in this letter that I provided in your memorandum? He stated that the surrender of the FERC licensure would dramatically change the scenario, because no hydropower would require the dam, not having hydropower, would require the dam to be operated with the gates open as a run-of-river dam to pass the river flows. So in his opinion, he's not the decision maker on this, but he would anticipate that would take pressure off of the county to complete the gate repairs in as short of a timeframe as is currently in our scenario. He stated that the license amendment process from the FERC to the DNR would have many layers. It would be involved many staff, as well as legal from both the DNR and the FERC. And if the county were to submit a letter surrendering the licensure, it would trigger a lot of action within the FERC. a lot of action within the FERC in order to provide a response. So it would get the FERC and the DNR talking and they would have to do something about it because the FERC would have to evaluate all of these criteria. The DNR would have to evaluate all of these criteria and determine which, if any, are critical. And would that still stay on the same timeframe or would it be significantly reduced? A lot of the document development that's due by December of this year may be postponed. That's what he would anticipate. At least that was the, what I took out of that conversation. If the county doesn't desire to produce hydroelectricity, then the best thing to do is to turn the regulation of the dam over to the DNR. He, he thought that would be less burdensome to the county. He'd be willing to facilitate a virtual meeting between the FERC staff and county leadership to further discuss this matter if the board would so like. So I guess that was one of my questions is knowing this is not a guarantee that the gate repairs will, will not be necessary, that it's still possible that the DNR can say, you gotta get the gates repaired until the dam's removed for safety or monitoring purposes. I can't guarantee that that's not going to become necessary, but it would likely provide the county more time to make repairs and likely reduce regulatory expenses and burden that we face with FERC regulation. So again, going back down that track of understanding there's consensus that we likely don't want to continue to pursue hydroproduction, then the question really begs to be asked, do we need to continue to have the FERC licensure? We, we took over the FERC licensure because at the time of the consideration, we thought we may still be interested in pursuing hydroproduction. I don't expect you to make that decision today, but I'm looking for direction on that. I could bring in as a formal action next month.
Well, and I think we're at that point, Ryan. I wouldn't disagree with you as far as bringing that in next week.
That's good for me.
Time is not ready. I think when you take these in steps.
I think that's, that is a good step.
Yep, and just, and we, we got steps to take here. We'll decide whether we want to do that and then we'll just take the next step and then we'll get to that, whether we want to keep it or not.
We could do that in two weeks.
Yeah, we might.
As far as I'm concerned, we can do it in two weeks.
Would the board like to have that discussion with the FERC? Have a, have a call set up or not?
I, I, I don't need, if you guys have been pretty involved, but you, are you talking before you bring that resolution to us?
It's an option that, that yes, we could try to set up a Zoom call and.
I think we make the decision and then you can say, we've decided not to continue it. Then you have that conversation.
Yeah, good idea.
Well, and the premise of that conversation would be to help just inform that decision ahead of time.
Okay.
What are, what are the potential ramifications and precautions? I don't anticipate it string too far, but he would be able to bring in people with more expertise and breadth and depth of this subject and how this would look to help inform the county perhaps a little bit better. I, I would at least fall through with doing it myself.
Okay.
And I would invite the board.
I don't think that's, yeah, that's all right to do that.
If commissioners are interested, if not, I can certainly provide it in a report. I know I've just had these gentlemen and several other calls and I think it's been helpful, at least for me. I hope you felt it's a good use of your time, but if not, I could certainly do that on my own as well.
Well, I think one of the first decision points we've got to make is, is it the county's job to produce electricity? Is that our core mission? I mean, to me, that's a yes or no question. Okay, if it's a yes, I think then the next question is, if it is our job to produce electricity for, for county residents, how do we efficiently and effectively do that? Is it water, hydroelectric? Is it wind? Is it solar? Is it something else? When do? I mean, so the first question I think is a yes or no. Are, do we feel as a county board, it's our job to produce electricity? I mean, I understand we, we did that, we did that. We also bought a dam because it was the county bridge. You know, we kind of forget that sometimes that that was a value to us because we needed a way over the river. So to me, in my mind, the first question is, is it the county's job to produce electricity? Yes or no? After we've made that decision, then it's our decision, the next question is, do we then want to, because we don't need to, is it, that's the time to make the question or answer the question, do we surrender our FERC license exemption? You know, and if that's a yes or no, and I guess I'm not sure why we would keep it unless we're thinking about, I'm not sure what, it probably doesn't work on a new dam or something like that. So do we surrender that and then we go to the DM, the DNR permit and do that? I think that's to me kind of the first three main questions. I think the question we all know the answer to is, is, you know, do we want to keep the dam safe? And I think that right now, that question is yes. So as we get down this line and made those, then we need to, do we keep the dam safe? Then we need to do, what is the value or what is the importance of the tainer gates and things like that? And looking at that as far as if we do choose to repair those, what is the funding available and things like that? But to me, it's, it's, is it our job to produce electricity? Yes or no beforehand? If it is yes, is it hydro? Is it wind? Is it solar? Is it something else? And if we choose not to do that, then the next question is, do we surrender? And start to take some of those things off the table.
Well, if we answer the first question, no, the other two answer themselves.
I would assume so.
You would think, I mean, how, I mean, you say you're, you're, we're going to not be in the power generating business, why would we have a FERC permit on a dam?
But I don't think we should, I don't think we decided to surrender the FERC license first. We've got to make that, make sure where we are on producing electricity.
Agreed.
I'd have to agree to that.
Yeah, because if the answer to that is yes, this just might not be the right way to produce that energy. If we think that that's beneficial for the county to fund projects, you know, yeah, but that's, that's something we could bring forward in the next, I don't want to say next meeting because staff has a lot of work to do, so I'm not going to pick a date. You'll have conversations with Bob and Josh.
I, I'd actually like to try to get it at the next meeting just so I don't go too far down this track of spending money on updating all these.
It's up to you guys if, wherever you get together.
We'll try.
I'm fine with, if you can get it here for the next meeting, I'm fine with it.
I'll, I'll discuss with Bob on how that would look, whether it would be resolution or just action items within the agenda.
We got planning and zoning next meeting, so I don't know how busy it'll be, but find a spot for it. We've talked about it at great length. I think it'll be a, just more of a refresh our memory and make an action item out of it.
I'll attempt to get that call set up.
And the, the action item itself won't take very long.
No.
I'll attempt to get that call set up so that I'll be in position to provide you with an update on the conversation with the FERC on.
Okay.
Everybody understand? Okay. All right.
This is very helpful. I do want to thank you guys. Tremendous for me as far as, there's so many moving parts in different directions that things are going to try to focus our efforts and, and make sure we're heading in the right direction and not chasing too many things down that are not going to be impactful for us. We did have Representative Brad Finstead out to the dam late last week and had a really good tour, so appreciative of commissioners for making it out to meet with him. I, I think very impactful and I hope that he'll be a good supporter of whatever our direction is in the future, but I, I think we got some good insight and feedback from him on getting into the bowels of the dam and really seeing some of the deteriorated concrete members and the efflorescence that's coming through the concrete. That's a sign that the reinforcing steel is corroding within this concrete. And seeing the concrete beams with missing chunks of, you know, missing layers and layers of concrete and rebar explosives are completely gone. So one, one item we'll talk about is perhaps can we kind of show some of that because the public doesn't get to see that level of deterioration. Is there ways that we could perhaps share some of those damages and make it more publicly available because we, we don't offer tours obviously because of the safety concerns?
Well, sure, let the commissioners go down there, but not the general public.
But that was one of his recommendations is to go down there with a good camera crew and videotape the issues that are inside the dam and, and have somebody while we're doing it, explain what this means. You know, what does that mean with the weight coming down the sidewalls on the inside? You know, how does that affect the stability of the dam? I mean, there's so much that you look on the outside, you don't understand. You, you get on the inside and it's a, it's a complete different story. And I think that's, you know, be transparent, explain to the public what's going on with this dam. And I think that's, that's a big part of what's going, you know, what we need to do to be transparent.
I, I think that's a good idea and, and I know, and he brought it up, Finstead brought it up.
Yep. That was his, his point and I agreed with him.
Yeah.
Aside from that, I've got a few other items that are all primarily carryover. We talked about the outstanding tasks that are provided in this document that, you know, remind you, is critical energy infrastructure stamped, so it's confidential, but gives you at least a better detail of all of the different items that were being expected to do to maintain that FERC licensure. That's just some sections of it, but they will create considerable financial and time burden on our staff and our.
As you sit here and talk about that, I would imagine the time that the staff put into this, your time is overwhelming and then all your other projects. So thank you for all that work.
You're welcome.
Definitely.
And here you go, Ryan. You can have that back, I don't need it.
All right, that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you much, Ryan.
For your time today.
We'll be hearing more.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
You want to go on or you want to take a break?
We want to go on. We got a corner combine.
Okay.
We want a combine?
We got a corner.
Combine sitting still, Vance.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it, I do. Let's go on.
All right, if everybody's okay with that.
We ain't got much left to do.
Yeah. We can do that.
We have to hear from Pat right now. Awesome.
We have the current attorney.
Morning, Pat.
In the interest of combine, and I'll make this short. If you have any questions, let me know. I just wanted to mention a couple of things with, we were able to obtain through medical recovery proceeds of $153,000 within the last couple of weeks. So that is something good that you should be aware of. And then also on top of that, just of note that our truancy intervention program that we started back in 2016 and then probation came alongside in, in 2019. With the pandemic, the attendance records and the truancies were pretty low. Well, they're back on par right now because the schools are really pushing for the kids to be back to normal and whatnot. So we're seeing a large surge in that area, so I just want to make you aware of that. Any questions, concerns, comments, please let me know.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you. That was a very short, concise. All right. Now we have the minutes from the last board meeting.
All right. Board for the minutes to approve for the last two weeks.
I would move to approve. Vance moves to approve, they're second?
I'll second.
Second by Gillian. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. And now we have the bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
Kevin moves to approve and Kip seconds. Any questions? Not hearing none?
Got nothing.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. And then we have human resources.
All right. Mr. Chair, pretty light HR agenda for this week. Had a resignation in the eligibility specialist ranks in human services. Recruitment was initiated and there was a hire for that already. Also a promotion of a legal assistant to a legal assistant one within the county attorney's office and recruitment initiated for a legal assistant. That would conclude the HR report.
Wow. Thank you. Okay. September financial status report.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, financial status report as of September 30th. As you see, revenues for this time period, a little over 74 million with expenditures pushing 87 million, on par with where we should be for this time of year. In the last month, we definitely saw a significant increase in our contracts and fees, which is what we saw since the, at the last board meeting, a lot of bills coming in for bridges, road projects. So that's really what's pushed up those numbers for the, the contracts and fees line item, but nothing out of the ordinary and in line of where we should be for this time of year. Everything status quo in the enterprise fund at this point in time. And then on page two, looking where we're at for total county funds, sitting at a little over $122 million at this point in time, which down a little bit from, from last month, but what we'd, what we'd expect based on some of the, the expenditures that went out in the last month for the, the projects. Any questions any of the board members may have on that?
Looks good. Hearing none, I guess. That's, that would be about it, I think. Yeah. Thank you, Josh, all that. Guess we will go to quick, we got committee reports. Let's start with our junior, I hate to say junior member.
Rookie.
Newer member, newest member. How's that?
Uh, September 28th was the community education meeting that I had. It was at the new early learning center on Map Drive. That was very awesome to see they're combining all the different early learning centers in the Mankato area to one. And then they, next week they have a celebration at Lincoln School for 100 years, celebration of the community education. Last Friday was the Community Health Services Advisory Committee that I sat on was very interesting. That's the end of my report.
Okay. Yep.
All right, Mr. Chair, mine's relatively short. Just a lot of run-of-the-mill meetings, but we had a public works update with some county staff. I had a couple self-central workforce meetings, extra meetings. And we also had a lot of statewide emergency communication board, my legislative meeting, and our full board met. And then we got to hear from the MRCI board last Monday. Everything's going really well up there. They got the programs coming into place and Brian is retiring at the end of this year, so they're in the search for a new person to run his spot. And that, and then other than some ditch stuff and some road stuff, that brings my report up to date.
Okay. Thanks, Kip. Kevin?
Since our September 27th board, I participated on the 29th on a drainage work group. As we look at, talking about public waters inventory as well as legislation to require improvements and maintenance of drainage, be on a, on a portal, a statewide portal, much like we do in, here in the county. On the 6th of October, had the opportunity to represent the county at USTA Farm Bill Listening Session with Senator Tina Smith, focused on rural development issues. So we, we participated in that. And then later that day, as already has been mentioned, was the Rapidan Dam Tour with Congressman Brad Finston. I participated in that. Calls have been primarily with MFS farms, the dam and ditches. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Vice Chair Vance?
I, September 27th, we had our last board meeting. On the 28th, 29th and 30th, I had a MACAC, our Community Corrections Action, County's Annual Conference. And on my way up to Breezy Point where that conference was, I was on a call-in for the public works building information that we had. October 1st, we had a community farm open house out at the community farm. It, quite a few people came out and enjoyed fresh apple cider and, and food that was taken. We actually took apart one of the things for, dug up some potatoes and it was probably one of the nicest community farm open houses that I've seen in the 11 years that we've been doing this. So this is, it was kind of enjoyable. October 3rd, I had a Transportation Alliance Legislative Meeting on Zoom. October 4th, I had a NACO membership meeting. On October 5th, we had a department head meeting. And on October 6th, I had a NACO Transportation Committee meeting and then the Rapidan Dam Tour that's already been talked about.
All right, thanks Vance. Just a couple of things. Kevin and I, we did have a public works update on building locations for public works on the 28th. Thursday on the 19th, did have Mankato Affordable Housing Shareholders Group. Again, it's always virtual and it's, one of the ideas, it's a new, a catwalk relatively new for us is the. is the community land trust idea where we help people to get into affordable housing, you know, buying up older houses and repairing them and, and educating people on, you know, homeownership. That's with a sponsorship with the city. And on the 5th of October, did have the apartment heads. And later in the day, had ongoing some interviews with partners for housing for our director. That's still ongoing here. And then October 6th, had the, with, actually went out to, with, I guess more as the chair of the board, was invited to the solar farms out there off of 22 and Riverfront Drive with Senator Tina Smith. Actually, then our former board member showed up, Colleen Ancamer, and that was an interesting tour of, that's quite a big solar farm, and it generates a lot of energy. Then, of course, I did catch Brad Finstead for a bit on that, at our dam later in the afternoon. And that does conclude my report. So with that.
I would move that we recess.
Kevin moves to recess. Kevin second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those carries.
Good job, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.